Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, please stand to pledge allegiance. Christian Williams.
All right, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You were throwing me there a little Mark, but I stayed on track. Because of the delay.
Oh, sorry again.
No worries. All right, see you Daniel.
See you, thank you.
We're gonna open the work session for August second, twenty twenty-two. Reminder that this meeting is being recorded, Mark. Are there any additions or delusions to the agenda?
Yes, I have two, one addition, excuse me, OHA agreement one six nine five one eight dash six and two deletions, the guardianship IGA and personal property tax order.
Okay, thank you. Uh, first topic then will go to you Melanie with the sheriff patrol vehicle purchase.
So two of these vehicles will be purchased by the county, um, and one's going to be purchased by the town, Lakeview. Um, I sent out bids to four qualified vendors and I received two back. Under sheriff and I reviewed them and we both agree that we should accept the bid from Hall Motor Company in the amount of forty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars per vehicle.
You guys have a meeting, aren't you?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll be done probably in a little bit.
Okay.
And was Hall Motor the low bid?
Yeah, by about ten thousand dollars. Give or take.
Let's see the. Just wanna make sure. All right, we're good for Hall Motor.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any other discussion on this topic?
Not many.
So one vehicle from the county, one from the town.
Two county.
Two county.
The one that we ordered last year still doesn't have a bid number, it's still in process. So I rolled that purchase over with a resolution you guys probably remember at the end of last fiscal year. So there should be one here in a month or two, but that's separate from this, just an update. They're still pretty far behind.
Well, if you can get a vehicle for that price still, yeah, the world's gonna be okay.
Amen.
Cause I don't see prices like that very often. I mean, that's your base model, I'm sure.
And we get a government discount.
We have a government discount.
That's a good deal. All right.
Guys, good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, uh, next up then is the third amendment to the Portland State University contract, number nine twenty-nine three four. Melanie, do you have some background on this?
Yeah, um, this just admits the current contract that's in place, there will be no fiscal change. And it goes through the end of the year, but they just wrapped up surveys a week and a half ago, so we should be done with the library project very soon.
This is the library project for?
For the community development block grant survey for demographics to make, see if they qualify.
For Northlake.
For Northlake.
Yes.
Didn't, did we get all the surveys back?
I assume so. I don't know if they were all returned, but enough were.
Okay. Why, why are we extending it out for a whole other year?
That's just their practice. I asked that also, since we have, have done them.
Didn't, didn't we extend that?
You extended it, but it expired the end of last month.
Your, your agreement, I'm sure. You know, this gives us plenty of cushion in the event that there's some unforeseen delays again. But, uh, this gets the deal done to have that potential block grant information put together.
So when will we actually apply for the grant?
I'd like to, if you want, I can talk to you about that offline.
Okay.
This doesn't require any action today, huh? Rural revitalization and fair support priorities. This is the email we got last week and then actually the week before or two from Representative Greg Smith. But also last week from Representative Owens. You guys want me to read what Rep Owens had to say or what Rep Smith had to say?
Mark, did you receive those emails? And the, uh?
We're on emails today, um, so if you could read it, that would be great.
I'll read, uh, Rep Owens, it's a little more to the point here. Speaker's office has tasked a group of rural legislators with developing a potential funding package to support rural economic development. Specifically, I've been asked to do a deep dive into regional rever- rural revitalization and venue and county fair support. The program will be used to revive, revitalize rural communities through innovative workforce housing and infrastructure solutions. Funds will be revived, reserved for rural areas with the presence for counties with historically low growth rates and under investment in housing infrastructure. The other, uh, that was for rural, regional rural revitalization, too many R's there. The other one for venue and county fair support, Oregon Business Development Department to develop and implement program in response to negative impact of COVID-nineteen pandemic on organizations or revenue performing arts museums, county fairs. I am requesting your assistance in identifying the highest and best use for these potential funds. I would ask that you work collaboratively with your region and community and send me your top three projects or concepts of how you would utilize these potential funds. I look forward to receiving your priorities, does not give a due date. Unless you've heard differently.
No, um. There was a lot of other programs included in that email from Greg Smith.
Yeah. So another, other categories were outdoor recreation, um, for four million. Representative Gomburg is in charge of that one. SBDC grant program, Representative Gomburg again, which, uh, that acronym stands for individual small business development centers. There's an Oregon seafood infrastructure for two million. The county fair support, Rep Owens and Smith are on that one. Meat processing for ten million. Uh, expand grant program with the Department of Ag to fund upgrades for new construction and establishments expected to operate under program of state meat inspection and expansion of certain establishments that operate under program of federal inspections. And then the next one is industrial lands, fund capitalization.
And that's for twenty-five million.
Twenty-five million. That assists Oregon communities with funding infrastructure improvements to develop their industrial land into shovel-ready industrial sites, thus greatly increasing their ability to attract and grow manufacturing firms. That kinda sounds, uh, interesting to me as far as what we're trying to do as far as opening our, what do we call that down there, the south? Our industrial park and then all, and then also, uh, you know, potentially getting natural gas along the railroad, things like that for other businesses.
Right, um, there's even a piece in there where it says there is a possibility of a loan, of a, a forgivable loan portion to better assist those communities without the debt capacity to develop industrial sites. I feel like we qualify.
Yeah. So potentially not only do we need to rep, respond to Rep Owens, but maybe we need to respond to Rep Smith as well.
Yeah.
What your guys' thoughts are. Mark, uh, I would assume that we wanna reach out about the, uh, Lake County Fair. Would that be a potential opportunity there?
Yeah, in a couple ways, uh, um, first we're working on the industrial. We're turning the north end of the fairgrounds into industrial land. The whole thing and open, fingers crossed on that green cement, um, coming in there. But we have room for more industrial activity there on the north end besides the, um, green cement project. How much was that for the, um, fairgrounds?
Twenty million.
I'm gonna bring on that too. I guess we can ask them to help us with our, the event center, our, our big arena, um, on that. That's our first stage of our master plan. Sorry to jump around too, but on the meat thing, which is all good, I still don't, I don't think they have a solution to the, um, tallow, where the tallow's gonna go if we do create a meat plant.
Yeah.
We'd have to work that out, I guess.
Well, then you could jump down to the industrial lands fund capitalization, maybe there's some possibilities there to.
Get a liner?
Yeah.
What's a liner, quoted at four million?
Yeah, something like that.
Well, I talked to the DQ about just creating a pit with a liner just for tallow products, um. And so far they haven't budged on allowing us to do that, I guess we can keep working on them, but, they don't operate at a real high speed, so.
Do you wanna talk a little bit about housing?
Yeah, sure, I didn't wanna jump in the middle.
We're all over the board anyways.
Yeah. So, um, going quickly back, the largest portion of money is actually allocated towards regional rural revitalization. Um, and this is directly, uh, focused on rural communities, um, and solving issues in workforce housing and infrastructure solutions. So, a- and the, the funds are reserved, they're actually reserved for rural areas with a preference for counties with a historically low growth rate and under investment in housing infrastructure. So I feel like, you know, we're kind of at the top of the list here. What I'm trying to do right now is work with Denise over at SCOED to help, um, put together language to get back to Rep Owens and Rep Marsh as to, you know, to kind of mimic what we've seen Casita do. And so that we can make a good case for putting these dollars to work and continuing to use them over time. That's, uh, that's kind of the goal right now is to just kind of solidify that language of what our intent is and, uh, mimic what Casita's done and put forward a proposal that's reasonable. You know, kind of spitballing here, um, two to three million is what I thought would be appropriate maybe for, the local share. Now, if you remember, Casita was relying heavily on investors. And then Klamath County put forward, you know, their share also kind of as a match. Being that we're really struggling and we don't really have the discretionary dollars that Klamath does to be able to put forward a considerable match, I think this might be able to take its place and really kind of buffer that beginning fund that we can start, you know, putting into housing and structures and get them on the ground. Just a thought right now, kinda wanna hear what you guys thought of it, Denise and I have been kinda going back and forth.
We have somebody that can champion that or maybe even put it out for bid. For somebody to champion that project and oversee that, to make sure that that is running like you guys want it to run. I guess our version of Randy Cox. And just put it out for bid instead of a full-time position, but I don't know what you guys wanna do there.
Well, the idea what Denise and I have talked about right now is because, you know, years before we had Ginger. And Ginger was kind of our economic development person for the county. Um, what Denise and I have talked about is bringing that position back and she's got a job description laid out right now. She's planning on hiring a person and this will be the first and only project on this person's radar for the time being. Um, because we've identified this as, you know, priority. But until we get that person on board, honestly, I think we're gonna have to kind of fill in the gaps there. And it's gonna be me and Denise and us as commissioners that are gonna have to really champion that. Once we get someone hired and they're, they're on at SCOED, that would be, the project would be run by them. And I've asked Denise that, you know, when we, when it comes time to hire this person, I think it would be good to have a commissioner or the commissioners part of that interview panel so that we can approve and get to meet that person, make sure that they're who we want. So. I don't know, what do you think about that?
That wo- that works for me, um. We just, I just don't wanna waste any more time, cause as we've all talked about, the housing thing has really, it's putting such, it's putting the brakes on our economic development in every way possible, because there's just nowhere for anybody to live, and so it's very important that we get that rolling.
I wish I had a couple more Randy Cox, I guess I, is that's.
Yeah, he's a genius.
Randy's just been terrific to work with and, uh, unfortunately, I think his time is just stretched too thin and he's not able to make the time commitment. But, that's just.
We'll put it out there.
Yeah.
See what we get.
See if we can hire somebody at SCOED to actually make this their full-time gig and this is, but would be what they're working on. And once the program, uh, you know, fingers crossed, once this project gets off the ground for Lake County rural revitalization, um, the idea would be that this person, that the job would kind of get a lot easier for that person, that person would have more capacity and to be able to work on more economic development projects. And be able to work with the commissioners and work on, in Lake County on other upcoming projects. But we need to have a body, we need to have a person in the county, um, that is working on economic development. This is kind of off topic, but not entirely, it's still tied to this and to, to echo, you know, what yours.
What's SCOED supposed to do for us?
Well, no, I was gonna say, uh, we have an applicant for, um, the public health nurse position on the north end of the county. But the, the main issue with hiring the individual is that there is no housing. And it's, uh, not for rent anyway. Been kind of bird dogging that the last couple days trying to find whether or not there's any, anyone with houses that are out for rent and there's nothing, the rental market is minimum if that. So those things prohibit our ability to recruit people even just right now and, and other places aside from just Lakeview, all around the county. So, the housing is a, is a big issue. What were you saying about SCOED again, sorry?
Well, if we invest in a person or, you know, we got a person. If SCOED gets a person for Lake County, I mean, we're right back to where we're paying for another position again. They're gonna want more money from us, SCOED, you know? Now I realize you get what you pay for. But, you know, we'll be back in that, you know, hopefully they're doing things for Lake County and helping us out, you know? Kind of always been in that quandary with SCOED.
Yeah.
Spinning wheels a little bit.
Right. And even if, I, I mean, it's, it's tough because, you know, I, I, I'm not saying that we don't get any help from Denise because I think Denise makes a, a concerted effort to be over here and help us out. But, uh, on a project like this, I mean, we just really need.
Yeah. Somebody to champion it.
Right, and she's, she's acknowledged that and she's kind of saying, you know, like, hey, I think we can take this on and hire this other person. So, and devote them to Lake County's needs, at least for the time being. And, uh, if it comes up a conversation, you know, that we might need to pay a little bit extra, well, that comes back to review of quality of service too, that we have to evaluate. And we just take all those things into consideration. You know, it's a valid point.
Well, so I think we're, you know, from hearing you guys and I know I fully support it, we wanna make sure we're getting in, uh, back to Rep Owens about, uh, you know, a plan for Lake County for rural revitalization, for sure. Sounds like you're working with Denise on, on something for that. Mark, I don't know, you know, if you're gonna get time to work on anything for the fairgrounds, but, or when the next fair meeting is, but it's certainly run by those guys. We've also got, you know, uh, Paisley Fairgrounds and the Christmas Valley Fairgrounds. Maybe we could do a combo something, you know, to help out on free somehow, I don't know if that's possible or not, or how that would look. But, you know, the other two, uh, fair, uh, arenas are getting a lot more use. We're seeing more and more, uh, activities at those arenas, so. And then this industrial lands cap, fund capitalization with Rep Smith. Again, which assists Oregon communities with funding infrastructure improvements to develop their industrial land into shovel-ready industries, thus greatly increasing their ability to attract and grow manufacturing firms. You know, we've had lots of ideas there, um, we've talked about natural gas, um, we're, we're completely full down at our industrial park. You know, is it, do we need to think about building another building? You know, attract more businesses, um, talking with, uh, Mike McGowan, you know, his business would like to expand and they really need, uh, they're really looking for a facility and whatnot, so. You know, there's lots of opportunity there, especially if we own some of the property down there. It just was, you know, here, here's an opportunity we're looking at here.
Would, going quickly back to the housing, would three million be an appropriate request for you guys in your mind? Two to three million, what's your preference? Higher, lower?
I agree with somewhere in that two to three million. You know, there's thirty million available. You know, that's probably, if you're gonna split it, you know, again, this is for rural Oregon with preference for counties with historically low growth rates and under investment in housing infrastructure. We fit that category.
I know.
And so I think getting less than three million, we're short ourselves a little bit.
I totally agree, um, and remember that on that south, uh, the south end water project that came up, with getting water between Ninth and Tenth Street and we have a couple contractors that have bought lots that they wanna put duplexes on and we need the water there. You know, that project alone was around a hundred and fifteen thousand just to put the piping in, water and sewer. And so.
How much was it again?
How much?
Yeah, how much was it again proposed?
They told me a hundred and fifteen thousand, um, and then Scott Langham said the town, the town would put in the meters as their contribution. And so, you know, if we can get projects like that and true infrastructure where you're putting sewer, water, electric into these buildable lots, um, I think if we had a lot like with Adam Young trying to build something, if we just have them sign a contract saying they will do this project if they get the water, or excuse me, if they get the water in the sewer end, they'll actually build, um, the project, then that takes out a huge expense for these contractors if we're supplying the infrastructure for the water, sewer and electric into these areas. So.
It's gonna be tough to do those one at a time, it seems like, it'd be nice if we could, you know.
Kind of do a one proposal that could kind of cover the south end.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now, I'm not entirely sure how to word it, but I think I could. I think I could word Smith in such a way that where, you know, we propose this housing, but there's some discretion where these dollars could be used for certain infrastructure projects if the benefit is high, you know? I mean, I don't know.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like Randy Cox's program, um, in a way where, you know, we're gonna provide the water and the sewer and the electric to these, um, lots that they're gonna build on. And so contractor come on to us and they're gonna build on lot A and we provide, uh, sewer and water and they build, and if they don't build within a certain amount of time, they'll have to pay the county back or whatever for that infrastructure. And so they can apply for, I guess it's a grant that we're providing so they'll start building houses, is my thought on how we run that.
I'm gonna go for four million. So I'm kind of leaning, I mean, unless, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you're saying.
If you ask for four or five million and we got three. We'd, it will, so.
Well, if you ask for three and you get two, you know, now you're a little more limited. But, again, your, your original intent was to get some seed money to get the housing project started.
That's it, and we can still, you know, look for investor groups to put into it, you know, and, and.
So maybe you have two in that rural revitalization, one for housing, one for infrastructure. You know, so that it doesn't confuse the two.
Right.
You know what I mean? And then you ask for million dollars or.
No, like a million bucks for the, uh, infrastructure piece.
You can always maybe talk to business or, Oregon, piece some money together there too.
Right. Right.
Similar to what we did with North End, Lakeview Park.
Right. Right.
Okay, um, what are you guys thinking timelines on this? We need to, we also need to.
Next couple of weeks be done, whether to have it in. I mean, I'd like to have this in to Rep Owens within a week. This week.
Be good to hear from the public a little more too.
Yeah.
Anyone else is out there?
We'll keep, keep this rolling, you know, it's an open working draft, so to speak, you know, on what our plan is, but I think we need to at least get back to Rep Owens with a plan.
Okay.
Initially. At least on the rural revitalization piece. Fairgrounds, infrastructure lands capitalization fund, um, that's a, it's a really cool project. It's the, again, that's twenty-five million for that, which is the second largest pot of money in this proposal. And I think it it warrants some, you know, good thoughts on all of our parts to try and figure out how we can put those dollars to to use.
I agree.
So I I like Commissioner Schulberg's idea of possibly building another industrial building. Also, if us using industrial, uh, or since rezoning the north end of the fairgrounds with industrial. Maybe we can get some of those dollars to actually fund the railroad spur into that industrial area. And pay for that railroad spur.
Now that spur is there, but it's just not very long.
Right, there's a Y there, but the spur from the end of the Y, uh, into the fairgrounds. They're talking about putting, um, three little spurs off of that Y for car storage and, um, loaded rail cars. I don't know if you guys remember when Greens cement came. They started at thirty cars a week. Now they're between thirty and fifty cars a week on the rail. And, you know, if we get that, that will be the first time since Lake County's on the railroad that will actually be in the block where we'll actually start making money on the rail ourselves, the county. So it's a big deal for us.
Well, it's contingent on natural gas. We gotta be able to get natural gas down the rip, down the railroad track, you know, right away.
Is it, Chair, is it okay if I kind of give you an update on what was going on there?
Sure. Love to hear it.
So last week I had several meetings. One of them was with Senator Finley and the Oregon Department of Energy. Senator Finley and the Oregon Department of Energy are gonna help us continue to work with, um, Avista Utilities to try to get that line into Lakeview. Senator Finley said that when he talked to, um, the government relations part of Avista, he told them that if they didn't join on with us, that Lake County was thinking about creating their own utility. I guess Avista started getting serious then because they don't want us to become a utility and they're not, they're completely out of it. Um, and so we're working on that. On another meeting, I also met with Steve Vincent. Uh, if you guys remember, Steve Vincent works for Avista Utilities. I don't remember his title. He and I, we talked for over an hour and he's more than willing to work with Greens Cement to try to get this proposal in. Um, he's actually going to, um, get one of the Avista Utilities engineers to tell us the exact amount of what the cost would be for pipe into, uh, clear down to Emress. That will be the end of the line. And so he's working on that. My job is continue to work with Red Rock to see if we can use that part of the line. And so those are the things we're working on. I think it's, I think it's gonna work. It's just a matter of getting all of our ducks on the line. Um, I also talked with Brad Staub last week. I'm trying to get Greens Cement to, to, um, use propane instead of natural gas to start with because if they put in oil, waste oil, they have to put in contain, big, large containment tanks in case of a spill. If we put propane in, you'll just have big propane tanks and you can convert propane to natural gas with the changing of a few orifices and and regulators. And so the changeover would be better. Um, Brad was going to get a hold of Danny Gray because we're talking like a million gallons a year of propane. And so Brad was gonna call them. He was saying that with that kind of volume, he can get the price down close to what natural gas would be. And then that would buy us time to get the natural gas line in. We don't lose the potential customer of Greens Cement and.
That's great.
I'm just trying to use Plan A, B and C so we can land this fish, so.
Mark, can Steve Vista, Steve Vincent with Avista Utilities also estimate, um, natural gas quantity needs?
Yes, so.
For Greens.
What there will do would be a fixed cost on what it would cost us to put the line in, how big the line would be so we can have, um, we can guess, you know, how much volume we're gonna need through that line. And are we going to need, um, storage tanks where they put big natural gas storage tanks in? They're filled up and then if the usage goes over, um, the capacity of the, the line of the pipe, then they'll pump out of those storage contained back into. Yes, in short, yes, that's, it'll include all of that.
Cause you, cause you've mentioned that that was one of the concerns with Red Rock was, you know, so a third of that capacity can keep on going on down the line if it were built. Of what has been standing off from Ruby Pipeline to Red Rock, correct?
Yeah, and I've also heard, um, that Red Rock is considering putting in a larger pipeline themselves. And so, um, because they're thinking that the original engineering might not have been enough volume. And so if they increase volume, according to our contract, we'll increase volume and so.
So between Red Rock and Greens Cement, will that volume be enough to accommodate other potential future use?
So, right now, if Greens Cement, Colton, Pine and Emress all used the natural gas. Steve Vincent said we would have about enough volume for about thirteen hundred residential customers on top of it. And so. But if some of those folks, uh, the businesses use more, you know, of course, that's gonna decrease and so we need to be thinking what we need to do. My thought would be, you know, we put it in a bigger line than what we think we need and then go from there, but. But their engineer is supposed to let us know all of that potential.
And then, Mark, Greens Mint was kind of giving us a deadline of when we can figure all this out. Is that still a play or have they softened on that a little bit?
I haven't, I haven't heard that, that they've changed that in any way. Um, I'm actually gonna call Danny Gray today and kind of give him an update on what we're doing. Um, but that's why I wanted to get Brad Staub involved to call them so we can start looking that way until we buy some time with the propane. Cause if, um, if they'll agree to use propane to start with, we could meet that deadline. And so there's no way we could meet it on the natural gas right now. We got a promise from Red Rock and Avista.
Okay. It's great update. Yep, it's very good. All right. Any other discussion on rural revitalization and fair support priorities?
You wanna talk about Oregon's seafood infrastructure?
Particularly. I like it.
So, you know, our pipeline, natural gas pipeline could be involved. One of the hangups with Avista is they have to have a three-year return on the cost of the pipe. And it's actually a public utilities rule. And so if we can put the pipe in and not cost Avista that money, then they wouldn't have that overhead cost and the return, they would get their return in three years.
Yeah, I think it's definitely worth exploring. I think we gotta do some more asking and finding out if this would potentially qualify, which I can't imagine why it wouldn't.
And I'm just wondering too, Commissioners, if if we shouldn't figure, what would it cost us to put a whole new line in from Ruby? To our customers and bypass the Red Rock deal because Red Rock is so up in the air all the time, um.
How's, how serious was Red Rock about a second line or a larger line?
So I didn't even know about it until Steve Vincent brought it up and he had heard by the way, uh, engineers working for Avista. Um, I guess they're talking to the engineers and that. Otherwise I wouldn't even know that was happening. And so I don't know the seriousness of it. We'll try to get that information this week. I'm gonna work on this project all week and see what we can do, so.
Well, that would definitely be a factor, you know? Cause then maybe we could, uh, assuming Red Rock doesn't need both lines. You know, then maybe we could take advantage of the one that's currently in.
Oh, the simpler way would definitely be using Red Rock right now, but.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion there? Uh, last thing on our agenda here is OHA agreement, one, six, nine, five, one, eight, dash, six.
Doesn't appear to be any fiscal change to this agreement. It might just be some minor, did you ever hear back from Judy or?
I can read it though. It says that they changed the, um, attachment A and they changed. It says two A. Section one of Exhibit C of this agreement, I'll financially award for fiscal year twenty-two is hereby superseded in replacement its entirety by attached A entitled fiscal assistance award fiscal year twenty-two. So they just updated that attachment. But there's no fiscal change.
Okay. Guess I'm still confused as to what's updated, but I'm, I'm good with it. It's not a maybe just stuff on the footnotes or something, maybe the comments? Maybe it's just updating rollover of unspent dollars.
That's what it looks like. If it wasn't, uh, spent within the timeframe, there's no dollars being added or deleted.
They're just rolling them over.
It's just allowing it to continue to be spent with current agreement.
Right.
Funds are available. Rollover on spent funds.
Additional funds to be awarded once budgets are final.
Okay. We can decide on that tomorrow. Okay?
Yep.
Other liaison updates?
I just one, uh, Tyson Lane called me yesterday and they're going to want to go ahead with a variance for ASA number four here in Lakeview. And so it's going to be in addition to on our agenda tomorrow and Tyson will be here to give us a little update on how things are going in ASA number four. So, um, and it's really all they need from us is a support letter. When they send in their application to the state for their variance so that they don't have to have, so that they can run their ambulances without a paramedic onboard. That was one of the only real updates that I had just on my radar last, oh, nine one one, yeah, cool. Barry, why don't you start with kind of where you're at with nine one one?
Well, as two of you know, we've had many discussions with our nine one one program here for Lake County. Currently, uh, nine one one cell phone taxes go towards, uh, helping pay for nine one one, but it doesn't cover everything. And the town has been the recipient, the town of Lakeview has been the recipient of those because they've hosted nine one one in that facility. The town is losing money on nine one one, um, through the changing of town managers. Various things throughout many years, uh, with a lot of, uh, failed past intergovernmental agreements, et cetera, et cetera. They're only collecting, in the past, they've only collected, what, forty thousand from the county and about five thousand from BLM. and about five thousand from BLM law enforcement. So it's been nine-one-one tax dollars, forty-five thousand, and then the town helped cover the rest. We've had at least four meetings, maybe, maybe more than that, with all the fire chiefs, sheriff, department, federal agencies, et cetera, discussing how we can move forward with nine-one-one. We're looking at all the ways that different counties are making it work across the state. We need to continue to do more homework. One of the things that's being proposed is that we form an IGC, Intergovernmental Council. And that would make nine-one-one its own entity versus being with the town. There are some communities that, that do utilize that. We're exploring that information. That's an option that we need to do some more homework on and take a look at. But the town has pretty much said that they are in a tough spot and they really would like to not have nine-one-one under them anymore in the future. Is that correct?
Yeah, all right.
So we need to look at all the options, you know. Does, does it somehow, we form this IGC and have some fixed costs for many different fire departments, federal agencies, hospital, the city, the county, or, you know, and/or do we add cost per call, you know, for service, depending on where the need is? All those things are things that we're taking a really hard look at right now. So give a good overview.
Yeah.
Anything you wanna add to that?
So one of the, I mean, I, I kind of said this before, I, I really appreciate the fact that the town came forward with this one-ninety. Previous to that meeting, I had not, I was not in understanding that we were going to go with an entirely separate entity. The one-ninety, IGC, IGA, I think it's got a lot of the users with some cold feet because it will be far more demanding of their time and their input. They're going to need to be involved and step up to the plate, but they've been wanting to have more say and more involvement in it for a while. So I guess, you know, really, we've, we've got about five options on the table. There is the potential possibility of a hybrid, you know, number six, something that, you know, you were kind of thinking, Barry. Number, the least of everyone's favorite is that it goes away and that it's outsourced to another county. And nine-one-one services are combined with another nine-one-one dispatch center. In which case, we will likely not ever get it back. And I hate to be, you know, that, that may sound like a bit of a downer, but just in my opinion, that's just where I'm kind of, where I'm seeing. Second is where it stays where it's at. Don't know if that's really a viable option at all because the towns kind of laid their cards on the table and they've said, you know, we don't really necessarily want nine-one-one under us anymore. They wanna make C a successful. Then it comes down to those other three. A lot of users continue to say, you know, they want the county to take it back. Well, with the, the increase of cost and, you know, with our increased, you know, financial liability that we have, that's a really hard, you know, bite for us to take. And just to, just to appease everyone saying, oh, you know, the county should take it, it should be with the county. The other two options are the one-ninety, which is being proposed by the town, where it would become its own entity, its own agency. And it would be governed by an IGC board made up of the users, including the county, the town, and the sheriff's office and so forth. And then probably go to a user-based fee. The thing is with the one-ninety, it cannot, it's, it's not the same as a tax district. It cannot go out for a levy, it cannot, you know, go out to try and raise funds in those other ways through taxation. It would have to be built mainly off of user-based fees. And that would include most likely, you know, large contributions from the county and the town still. But it would be run primarily by the users or the people who are paying the fees, I, I suppose you could say, that make up the committee. The other option, and I think some of the users were kind of leaning this way because I think they, they saw it as, you know, their, their get-out-of-jail-free card was a taxing district where it would be able to implement, you know, where it would go for a tax over the county, a county-wide tax, to be able to keep funds going. But it would be limited. We've seen, you know, proposals in Christmas Valley fail and so forth. And, you know, we have several places in Lake County that are already at compression levels. And to put additional taxation, taxes burden on the population would probably not be a good idea. Back in the day, there was a tax that was put on the ballot. It passed twice, it was about eighteen cents per thousand and it generated about sixty thousand some odd dollars a year. Today, that same tax are actually somewhere, somewhat lower, around fifteen cents per thousand would generate about a hundred thousand, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars a year. Which is still, it, it is not enough to run dispatch. It barely covers, you know, the additional space that we've got left. Even with our hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar contribution right now from the county coffers, it's still, we're still not in the black yet on nine-one-one. So it would only be a Band-Aid. They'd have to go for a significant tax in order to run nine-one-one dispatch indefinitely. And they'd probably still be reliant on the county at some point in the future. So, and it would take several years for something like that to be placed on the ballot with all the mapping and everything else and the requirements. So going back to the one-ninety, I think there's a lot of potential there still. I, I think there's, I'm a little unclear reading over the one-ninety on how one-ninety allows us to create an entirely new agency. I, 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 I'm, I'm, I, this kind of what's been told to us that that's what it allows to do. I'm still a little fuzzy on whether or not it actually does that.
And what costs are associated with that.
Correct.
Payroll, insurance.
Transfer of employees and everything else. Union negotiations, all that stuff.
Those are kind of things we need to ask some of the other candidates that have taken advantage of that.
Right. So if it's, you know, I, I don't, I'm not entirely sure how to handle it as, you know, the town's kind of saying, you know, they've laid their cards on the table. This is, they don't necessarily want it anymore. So if we go with a one-ninety or if we, you know, what are the other options? To make it work, I know you were kind of talking about a little bit of a hybrid where maybe there'd be some potential to contract with another dispatch center to take over for just a time period. Because, you know, maybe we don't have enough dispatchers to run and we can't cover all twenty-four hours. So maybe we work with another dispatch center to run for, you know, six hours during the night or
Twelve.
Yeah, twelve or something like that.
I, you know, need to look at all of it. So one of the counties that does take advantage of this is Creek County. So wanna go visit with those folks.
Is it Crook or Grant?
Oh, excuse me, Grant County.
Okay.
Grant, I was just in Creek County.
No worries.
Go talk to Grant County and see how that's going for them.
Yeah. And I know, like, Modoc County is very similar to us. They don't do a one-ninety, but they do do a user-based fee and they are able to cover. And they operated a far lower budget. So I'm just kind of curious as to what ins and outs of how they operate, where they're able to get their costs so, so low.
Talk to them too.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so that's kind of the nine-one-one. Do you have any questions on that, Commissioner Orson?
I do not, I just appreciate you guys' work on it, thank you.
It's work in progress. Any other updates? Hearing nine. We'll close our meeting, our work session at ten-one-one.